Okay, I'm going to call the study session order. Roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present?
For those of you watching at home, apparently we're having a Time Warner connection issue, which means you're not hearing what I'm saying to you. When you watch this in reruns, you will, and we're working on getting it fixed for when the Woody's Warf thing comes up later today. Clarification for items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Gardner.
Should I go? No. So people can read my lips? No.
I can't see either. Mr. Petrofs?
No.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Councilmember Daigle?
None.
Mr. Hin?
None.
And Mr. Selich?
I have none.
And I have none. First item up is the update of the master fee schedule as it relates to fire fees.
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is an item we've brought to you before previously in terms of a regular review of our fees. Remember, a fee for service is charged when a customer specifically asks for the service. We are allowed to charge cost recovery, or sometimes less, so the council may choose to sometimes charge less. We can't charge more. But this round is particularly complex. These are our fire fees and lifeguards, and we'll talk also about EMS. But I'm going to turn this over to Steve Montano, the Deputy Finance Director, for the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Steve Montano. I'm the Deputy Finance Director, and the goal for today's study session will be to describe the proposed changes to the municipal fee schedule as they pertain to the fire department. With study session input and comments today, finance staff will bring the fees back for formal approval on October 22nd. At that time, we'll also seek formal approval for all other non-fire-related fees in the master fee schedule. Non-fire related fees will be changed based on the Consumer Price Index. Most fees will take effect upon adoption, with the exception of the planning and development fees, which will become effective 60 days after adoption. So before I get into the main body of the presentation, I first wanted to give you some high-level summary slides. So first, I'll begin by saying that we are proposing to decrease and eliminate a good number of our fees, and no new fees are being proposed.
Are you highlighting those in some method?
Those will follow.
As far as the ones that are being eliminated?
Right, this is just a sort of a high-level summary.
No, I understand, but you will show the ones that are being eliminated as well as those that are--
Yes, I'll point to those, yes. Second, and in furtherance of council policy, the proposed fee schedule aligns revenues with the actual, both direct and indirect, costs of providing services. Also, the proposed fees are revised to better reflect the nature of the work performed, which in turn more accurately reflects the actual cost of service. So here are the four fee service categories we'll be describing today and how they are changing. So as you see here in this yellow shaded section, approximately 55 percent of all our fees, fire fees, are either decreasing or being eliminated. All comparable fees are lower than Orange County Fire Authority fees. And why is this important? This is important because 23 out of 34 cities in the county have their fire services provided by OCFA. So that's a pretty fair number of cities in the county. There is also a fifth fee service category for emergency service medical fees, for which we are proposing no changes at this time due to pending regulatory changes at the state and federal level. These changes will likely result in higher reimbursable payments for Medicare insured patients. We'll bring these fees back for council approval early next year after reviewing the full impacts of this federal program. So just to give you an outline of the remainder of the presentation, we're first going to go over the legal authority and council policies that guide how we develop the fee schedule. Then we'll go over the methodology used to calculate the fees, and then finally introduce the proposed changes to the fire fees by service category. So first, to give you a bit of background, the purpose of our fee schedule is to list the fees for services requested by specific individuals or entities. In general, these are services that do not benefit the general public. The master fee schedule is established by resolution of the city council, and the authority for charging these fees is found within the municipal code, which requires us to recover 100 percent of our costs, except for those subsidies identified in the code. We are not allowed to recover from service users more than the cost incurred for the city to provide that service. We're also guided by council policy to develop and administer our fees on a cost recovery We also thought it was important to describe the cost calculation methodology. So we've contracted with a firm, that's MGT, to use well-established cost accounting methodologies to calculate our municipal fees on a full cost recovery basis. And you see the scope of work listed here. Since 2010, we've been using a phased approach to updating our fees, whereby the fees for each department are analyzed and updated every three years. Fire fees should have been brought to council last year, however, with the change in our methodology and structure, fire fees were delayed until this year. Fire fees have not been updated for five years.
Will you, excuse me, will you be showing us the items within the fully burdened?
I'll be providing you with examples to show you how we came up with that. Yeah, it's also important to note that in the intervening years between fee studies, we do update our fees according to the Consumer Price Index. They're escalated accordingly every year. So we thought it was a good idea to sort of explain to you sort of the cost allocation or cost plan methodology that we use to calculate our fees. So walk you through an example here using a fire pump installation inspection. That's what you see pictured here is a fire pump. This is part of a fire sprinkler system water supply. The pump intake is either connected to the public underground water supply or some static water source. The purpose of the inspection is to ensure that installation goes according to the approved plan set and to verify that the pump performs according to the required specifications. So first step in calculating a fee like this is to calculate the hourly staffing rates and burden factors. So you see here listed the two fire personnel that are responsible for performing this task, their salary and benefit hourly rates, and what we call the burden factors, based on an hourly rate to get the total burden rate. So the burden factors really consist of the indirect overhead costs. These are costs which do contribute to the total cost of the service delivery and include such things as administration, training, insurance, legal, IT, payroll, vehicle maintenance, things like that. The second step is to calculate the time spent on the service. So if you look at this task description and time estimate grid, you see those two personnel listed and the various tasks that they need to perform. You see here on the total, it's about 135 minutes to perform this particular task. Third step is to actually calculate the cost to provide the service, and this is simply the product of the time spent on an hourly basis times the hourly rate. This yields the cost of providing the service. Over to the far right, you see how, when you do the math, this comes up to a fee of $349. And you see this fee actually listed in the fee schedule. So now, we'll get into the proposed changes by fee service category, and we'll begin with fire safety services. So fire safety services, as you can see in Exhibit B of your packet, lists the hourly rates for all fire personnel that may be called upon to provide reimbursable services, such as private lifeguard or other fire safety service at special events. We see that certain hourly rates within this category are decreasing while others are increasing to reflect the current costs of staff time, equipment, materials, and associated overhead. Next is the junior guards. So these are services that provide children with training in ocean safety and responding to emergency situations. I'll note here that the non-resident fee is proposed to increase $44 to align revenues with the actual cost of the service, and per finance committee recommendation, the resident rate is proposed to remain at 700. It was scheduled to increase slightly, and so if we maintain it at this rate, this will result in a 17.5 percent subsidy rate. Moving on to life safety, planning, and development, this is found in Exhibit D. These are services that recover the cost to perform plan reviews and onsite inspections for building developments. So here we see that the proposed changes will, again, align our fee descriptions with the structure that we see with Orange County Fire Authorities. And why is this important? Well, these are well-established fees. They're well-known and established within the developer and builder community. And as I said before, these are fees that are used or relied upon, at least the structure, by 24 out of 34 cities in the county. So the benefit here is to better describe the nature of the work performed and to make the fees generally more understandable and user-friendly to our customers. This change will allow us to align revenues to the actual cost of service, and this is done, essentially, in this category, we have a change in fee calculation methodology. We're moving from a rate that's based on the percentage of permit fees to the cost of actual staff time, you know, as I sort of described to you in that example. That's the big change here. It's really difficult to predict exactly which and how many fees will increase or decrease as a result of this change in methodology, but we do see that when we look at all the component fees, some are going up, some are going down. We have some examples for you that show that overall, we estimate that the cost of delivering these services or these tasks with all the component fees put together are generally decreasing. So here's some following examples. These usually include architectural, fire sprinkler, alarm system, and fire service underground plan reviews. So here's an example. We have a plan review inspection of a five-story residential mixed-use development. So as you see here, we see a decrease, pretty large decrease, some increases, but on the whole, for this particular plan review, we see a decrease of $640 in this example. Here's another example where we have an applicant that's seeking plan review and safety inspections for a four-unit residential, $150,000 improvement project. Again, you see some fees going down, some fees are going up, and overall, we see sort of a slight decrease here for a project such as this.
Could you go back to the previous slide for a moment?
Sure.
All right, and then come to this one you were just looking at. Flat fee.
Mm-hmm.
So that's different than what we're doing right now?
Yes, right, many of these fees, yes, are right now based on the value of the project. The permit is sort of calced off the value of the project, and the fee itself is calculated off the permit fee.
So this is one size fits all. So if I have a smaller project, it's a four-unit residential, but it's smaller, I'm going to pay the same fee as someone who might be doing a more expensive version, but it's still a four-unit residential?
Do you want to add to that, Kevin?
In the case that you mentioned, in general, yes, but it is tiered. So if you have a small residential, if you look at the actual proposed fee schedule, I believe it's less than 20 units on a multifamily is one fee, between 20 and 50 is a second fee, and more than 50 is a third and larger fee. So it does tier up, but it is not on a per-unit basis. It is in general categories tiered.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to our next category, which is life safety inspection. So these are staff services associated with providing annual and special event permits, state mandated inspections, hazardous material inspections, and state mandated operating permits. Here we see that various fees are decreasing due to the change in the fee calculation methodology. Other fees are increasing primarily, again, to align our revenues with the actual cost of the services. And in this particular category, we see a number of fees that are being eliminated. You see this in Exhibit E of your packet. And they're eliminated due to redundancy and combination. We've combined them with other fees. We saw an opportunity where, in changing the descriptions, we were able to sort of combine fee categories and get rid of redundant fees. So here's an example, our first example under this category. We have an inspection of an auto center facility that has 10 chemicals that require disclosure and inspection on an annual basis. The current fee is $696, the proposed fee is $162 for a savings of about $534. Second example, we see here, we have an annual permit renewal that requires inspection of a dry cleaning plant with two or fewer machines. And these are facilities that use hazardous solvents. They need to be inspected regularly. Again, here, you see a decrease of about $24. It's a slight smaller decrease than the one before, but here's an example of, again, how fees are going down. So here's an example of a special event that requires a tent inspection. So these are typically one-time events that require inspection and permitting by the fire department according to the type, size, and nature of the event. Here's an example of a special event that uses an outdoor tent, and it requires both an operational and a special event permit. Since the fee for safety inspection will be included in the cost of the permits, the total cost is being reduced. We used to have, as you see here, a fee, $240 for inspection. We not only reduced the cost of the permit fees, but incorporated the actual cost of the work while doing the permit work. So we see a bit of a decrease here. So want to sort of take this opportunity to respond to a question--
Just a second.
Yes, ma'am.
On Exhibit E, if I go down below number 367, I see a number of things that are looked to be deleted. Are these actually deleted, or are they moved? I mean, we have a special event permit, and we have a special event expedite request. So do we no longer do any expedition, or what are the distinctions here?
We are recommending removal of the expedite request as an additional fee. We will handle the permits as they come across, and we will manage the workflow appropriately. The expedite extra fee, in our view, is not necessarily an appropriate fee to be charged since it is the same amount of time, it's the same type of work, same quantity of work.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Sorry. Yeah, I kind of lost my-- Okay.
So while you're looking--
Yes.
I have a question about redundancy or duplicity. There are fees for an activity, like a permit or an inspection. There are also fees by personnel. In your first example, you showed how to inspect a pump would take two personnel at their fully burdened rate. Are there instances where somebody seeking the discretion of the fire department might pay twice the fee for the activity and get billed for a particular personnel's time?
No, unless within the fee schedule, it's an hourly fee, which we have a few of those-- I see those. Kind of the odd ones. So that would be direct hourly costs, but in the case where there's a flat fee, there's no possibility of doing a double fee.
So we could have a tent, special event that requires a tent inspection, you roll up with a fire truck. They're not going to see the fire truck fee and the tent fee?
That is correct. So I wanted to take this opportunity to answer a question that we get often, because there are events in our city where they're reoccurring in nature, and maybe it's the same tent that's used once every year. And the question is, well, if we put the same event on every year, why do I need to get the permit again? And the answer is, is that staff is required to inspect tents. There's no guarantee that it was inspected in exactly the same manner that it was in the year prior. So what we're looking for is, does the tent, in this iteration of its construction, have the proper exits, the lighting? Does it have the correct extinguisher sizes? And is the type and location appropriate for this type of tent? So these are things that need to happen as they occur. So in conclusion, I just wanted to say that the finance committee did review the proposed fee schedule on June 24th, and the proposed changes are inclusive of the recommendations. City staff also met with representatives of the Building Industry Association, the Irvine Company, and other stakeholders comprised of local architects, builders, designers, to gather their input and also give us an opportunity to describe the basis of our calculation methodology. The BIA's written comments and staff's responses to those comments can be found in Exhibit F of your packet. So at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Mayor Curry, this is a new guy question, and it falls under the thing, the only stupid one is one not asked, but I'm going to ask a stupid question nonetheless. From the point of view of budgeting and accounting, my belief is this should be a zero-sum game. You are providing a service, therefore, it's not a revenue generator, it's a cost recovery. How is that expressed in the budget so that we can demonstrate back to the public that we're providing a service and that's what you are paying for, not revenue generation?
The budget is reflective of the revenues that we do obtain for these fees for service. And I'll note that, you know, before coming here today, I did look up, for example, that the total fire department operation as a whole is $37 million. That's how much we budgeted in 1314 for the fire operation. The revenue that we'd obtained for all of these types of fees for service activities that I just described was $1.3 million in the year that just ended in June. Okay, so that gives you an example. That's about 3.7 percent of that operating cost. So all other fire operations are tax-supported, right? Our taxes go towards the big things, fire suppression, things of that sort.
I would also just like to add, that was probably one of the clearest presentations I have seen, and I want to thank you for that.
Yes, it was.
That was very nice.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McGregor?
Are we being asked to approve this tonight?
No, ma'am. We will be bringing this back to you on October 22nd for formal adoption.
I thought this was what you said initially, because I think most people looking at this wouldn't understand what it was about. They wouldn't understand it affects junior guards, it wouldn't affect the special events and that sort of thing. So it'd be nice to have a little bit of time to let people know in case they do want to make some comments.
Mr. Hill?
I would like to see some further drill down on the burden factors of the indirect expenses. In government contracting, on a cost-plus basis, there are very specific elements that businesses allowed to place into their overhead, and I would like to see how ours compares with that. I want to see if we're putting something in our overhead that we don't allow business to put in their overhead coming back the other way.
Councilmember Hill, we have our cost accounting consultant here today, and I'd offer to have her respond to you in that question. I don't know how much detail you want to get into, but she could certainly answer any question you might have along those lines.
Well, specifically on the detail, I'd like to see the line items and the amounts.
So for next time, the elements that go into the indirect costs especially?
Right. I mean, as an example, I don't need to see every single one, but the items should be the same on every single one.
Okay.
And I'd like to see that compared to what the state, others use as what they allow business to include in their cost. When I went through this the first time, which was probably now two years ago, maybe, I was not very clear on that, and I was not very comfortable with it, because I thought that we were putting things in our indirect cost that were generally not acceptable in indirect cost by business. And I would just like to take this opportunity to take a look at that and see.
Any other questions? All right, let me open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Curry, and members of the city council. My name is Jim Mosher. As we've heard, we all pay taxes that are used to fund the various city functions and services that benefit us all, while fees are used to pay for special services that we request and benefit ourselves individually. I'm not sure I entirely agree with that distinction, for as I believe Mayor Protem Hill said when he first saw this fee schedule a couple of years ago, "We can be nickled and dimed to death with fees to where our taxes would appear to pay for nothing but As you know, I'm someone who takes things quite literally when I see them, so when this was before the finance committee back in June, I did ask for clarification of the first page, which is in your packet here, as Exhibit A, and it lists some very basic services, like a fire truck and a lifeguard and so on. And if one took this literally, it would appear that if I was caught in a riptide and screamed for help and a lifeguard came out, I would be charged $45 minimum fee, and if a lifeguard captain came out, another 161, and if the battalion chief came out, 205, so on. And if I had a fire in my kitchen and a minimum fire engine with three persons came out, I might be billed 575. I believe I was reassured that those are still services that are provided out of our basic tax revenue, although the ambulance charges that are on here are apparently not, unless one is a member of the paramedic subscription service, which is oddly now blank when this was before the finance committee. There was a proposal to change the current fee of $48 an hour to $60 an hour. It's now blank, which I think we understood was because this is still under negotiation or reconsideration because of statewide changes. I would hope we could get a clarification of whether blank means that for the moment, when you approve this, does blank mean it's going to zero, or does blank mean that it's staying at $48? And second clarification, I think it'd be really helpful for the public, if it's possible. I don't want to put the fire department on the spot, but just kind of give us an overview of what the basic services are that we can expect to get for free out of our basic tax levy that we pay. And does that include rescuing the cat caught in a tree? Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers, please come forward.
Okay. Could you talk a little bit about what you're going to present? Because we have a three-minute limit, and I understand you have 17 slides, so unless you're a really fast talker--
Pretty fast talker.
--I'll need to defer to the mayor a little bit on this, too.
Three minutes, Victor. Either one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. It's good to see you again. I'm glad many of you are recovering from the tolls of this year. I represent the Building and Tree Association. We have over 100,000 members, or 1,000 members, who employ over 100,000 people in the noble profession of home building. Given the circumstances, I'd like to thank Assistant Chief Kitch for providing his time and Aaron from MGT. They've been very helpful. Staff here is warm and cordial. We really appreciate it. Mike Balsama expresses his regret that he couldn't be here tonight. My responsibility as government affairs manager is to provide extensive land use analysis with regard to today's discussions that we express concern. It's more of an open dialogue, and we look forward to being able to review the fees. Assistant Chief Kitch and I have had some preliminary discussion where we can do a scoping analysis on a per-project basis to see if fees do in fact go lower, but I think that's an ongoing discussion. So with respect to our initial concerns, is that, well, the first is the comparisons. Newport Beach Fire, in the analysis, directly compares to OCFA. I think it's a more fair comparison to compare yourselves to municipal fire agencies. OCFA has a budget of over $356 million. It's over 10 times as bigger than Newport Beach. And Orange County Fire Authority has had some, it's not meant to be disbaraging at all, but they've had some issues regarding some of their inspection fees that you've probably seen in the news as well. But when making apples-to-apples comparison, what we're trying to look at is likewise in other jurisdictions. And in some cases, Newport Beach has fees that are between 35% to 56% higher than other jurisdictions. That's not to say that Newport Beach is never going to be the lowest fee in the county, but it is to say that if there's a like-minded service or a like-exact service, such as the sprinkler cost, then shouldn't be something of equivalent. In an analysis, an email that was sent to me by Assistant Chief Kitch, is that there was an exact same service with the sprinkler cost. If you see in the letter, you'll see that there's a longer time and a longer wait. And the primary focus that we want to-- And the primary focus that we want to be able to go through in this exercise is, yes, can we show the public at large that they're receiving, one, redundancy in the bureaucracy, and, two, are they receiving the adequate service to serve their needs? And we want to focus on the customer service experience. And if we can do that, I believe we can reconcile any differences that we may have with your So with that, many of our comments are in there, but the primary focus, the overarching message that we have is that we want to be able to support more opportunity and economic freedom for the ability to create jobs and housing. And by being able to decrease the regulatory controls that we have in our community, that gives a lot more power to our citizens and our businesses. And thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you, Victor. We always enjoy hearing from the BIA on these issues, and we appreciate your constructive comments.
And Mayor Currie, we'd be happy to put Victor's presentation and make that available to the public as a part of the public record.
Let's do that. Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back. Is there a specific?
No, we just appreciated your feedback and the feedback of the public comments, and we'll bring this back to you ready for adoption at next time.
Very good. Thank you. We'll now go to public comments, including public comments on items on the closed session agenda. Is anyone wishing to make public comments?
Mayor Currie and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Those who know to look inside the Blue Agenda handout that very clearly says it's for the 7 o'clock meeting will find if they look inside that this is their one and only opportunity to comment now, well before 7:00, on the closed session. And if they do so, they'll find here that you are about to have a meeting with the city manager and the deputy city manager about their negotiations with 10 different bargaining groups that work for them, for the city manager. That same announcement was on your Blue Agenda on April 9th, and again on May 28th, and on every Blue Agenda since then. The city manager must have a very tough problem if this issue is still unresolved after eight sessions, and if you are truly sincere about the new comment inserted here that you're inviting comment on these issues, I think you at least owe the public a clearer explanation of what you're trying to instruct the city manager about. The second topic for closed session evaluation tonight is the job performance of the city attorney. And I wasn't planning to comment on that, other than to say that I think Aaron is a really nice guy, but like many city attorneys, I think he has a tendency to tell you what you want to hear rather than what I think you should hear. Last night, though, I noticed a little article online in the Daily Pilot about a letter I sent to the city clerk questioning the propriety of two members of the council's three-member finance committee jointly publishing, without benefit of a meeting, a commentary about the financial advantages of trash outsourcing. At least as of last night, it looked like the city attorney had taken it upon himself to decide not to respond to that letter, for he could not have asked you or the finance committee to share in that decision without a notice public meeting, and I saw no notice. In the article, he has paraphrased as saying that he thinks staff feels it's okay for a pair of finance committee members to talk among themselves as long as while they're talking, they think of themselves as council members rather than finance committee members. And now I hear maybe it's a matter of free speech. Well, folks, that is what you want to hear, but it's just not so. The Brown Act, two people out of three is a majority, and the Brown Act does not allow a majority to discuss their committee's topic except at a notice public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, Mr. City Attorney, you have your announcements before we go into closed session.
Yes, the city council will be adjourning to closed session to discuss the items on the regular agenda under closed session, Items A and B, which includes labor negotiations as well as the public employee performance evaluation of the city attorney.
Please stand adjourned to closed session.